This is the meeting of the township commission 21st, 2021. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice that this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Star Ledger, the Independent, and the two hundred times above posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filed with the township clerk on January 7th, 2021. Raymond Clark.
Here.
Mammon Sanabrito. Many women's now.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybelle.
Here.
Please rise for the platform.
Welcome into the House by the United States of America. Institute of the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, invisible liberty and justice.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to the troops serving worldwide, defending institutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have administration of the office. This time, I'd like to invite Deputy Mayor Hybelle, please come forward, with Police Officer John F. Walsifer.
There you go. There you go. All right. Stand. Speak. Sir, Bible. That's great. Thank you. John, raise your right hand. You'd have to make. I, John F. Walsifer, for second.
I, John F. Walsifer, second.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Sowmely swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
Constitution of this state.
Of New Jersey.
Of New Jersey.
And that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
Will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
To the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear faithfully.
I do swear faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all duties of police and sergeant.
Perform all duties of police and sergeant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right. Everybody, this is where you're signing away.
Okay. This isn't so much. Mom, I think this one too.
All right, great. It's all coffee for her. I know the chief wants to say a few words about you here, so I'm gonna let him go.
Thank you. John Brokaw Bellmore graduated from Madison School and High School, turned an associate through a work document in college, and a bachelor's degree in rockers. Joined the Middletown Police Department in 2013. In 2018 and '20, he was assigned at Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office as a detective in Bay Shore Narcotics Task Force. Did an outstanding job there. And in 2020, at the beginning of pandemic, he was transferred to protective service as a staff department with contact for the same intention of export investigation. So he has excellent every position and assignment he's had with the department. I'm kind of pleased to be outstanding, sort of very proud. But that is. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Behind the wall.
If you want to bow, kiss it.
I did?
Yeah.
We're getting old.
Went to the graduation.
Yes.
Next item on tonight's agenda, we have a public hearing for the Green Acres Stewardship Grants for Porcy Park Watershed and Program Project. This time, I'd like from the White Recreation Director. Can you hear everyone? Sorry.
I think so, yeah. You're good.
I think we're good.
Thanks. Hyde's gonna share a presentation for you on the screen. It's pretty brief, but as we talked about last time, being that we're a municipality, it does make us eligible to apply for the Green Acres Local Stewardship Program. We haven't really worked out this system, so I was gonna. The soonest program we decided to do is look up by for the Porcy Park Watershed Program, which means what we're looking to do is pull out all of the existing wood structures. So that's talking about boardwalks, that's talking about docks, the marsh platform, any bridges and down at the fossil beds, there's a lot of boardwalks and ravine stairs down there as well. So what we'd like to do is pull them all out and upgrade them, replace them. This isn't a one-to-one match grant, so 50% grant, 50% capital funds. I'm gonna try the next one too. I'm pretty sure everyone's well aware of where Porcy Park is. These pictures here are from our application, our site plan. If you look at it, this is Porcy Park proper. There's a little purple area on the left of your screen that's pointing to where the fossil beds are, so we are including those as well. But in the middle of the screen, there are a bunch of different circles, and there are actually five areas on Porcy Park proper that we're looking to replace the wood structures for. The sixth area being the fossil beds just hasn't fit all of the screen. So starting with this one, the top portion right there, that is the existing condition of the pond platform down by the Murray Farmhouse. That's where you do the pond netting, which is primarily our third grade class. There's a little dotted line, we're looking to expand it and pull the dock back a little bit. That's right by, like I said, by the farmhouse. The picture below it, that's the small pond. You're hopefully familiar with the area. If not, please come check it out. At the back half of that, there's a little stream where that blue line goes through to help feed that pond, which has really wet, we're proposing to put a little bridge over that. The top platform there is right behind the Murray Farmhouse. Can't really see it too well in the picture, but right above it, the top right corner of that picture is actually the spring house, which is the historic refrigerator that they used back at the farmhouse, but there's a boardwalk that goes down there. The steps are also all in that same area, but they're pretty old, they're pretty dated, so we're looking to tidy those up, pull them out, replace them, and kind of fix them. Next one, please. The top portion or the stairs that are going down into the ravine area, and the ravine being the bottom two pictures, those are the boardwalks there. The picture on the left, you'll see, I can't see that well, but it's actually starting to sink into the ravine. There's a tree that's kind of uprooting that whole ravine area, that whole boardwalk area. So we're looking to pull that out and replace that. This area here is the existing floating dock. It's pretty, it's pretty small and takes quite some effort to get down there. You can see the stairs in the bottom left and the bottom right pictures. They're not of any kind of consistent step, so we'd like to kind of, like I said, straighten those out, replace those as well, and then replace that whole boardwalk, which is the top right picture. You walk down the boardwalk, you turn to the right, and then you go to that pond's platform there, which is a great fishing hole, if anyone's looking for a little fishing hole. And then next page. So that one is currently existing. There are a bunch of trees that are down over some stairs that take us to the marsh platform. And that marsh platform is really good and used for our three to five-year-olds because it's not as far as the dock we just saw on the other area. So right now, it's unfortunately out of reach. Next page is over at the fossil bed. So this is the one that was not on the map, just below Nut Swamp School, Thompson Middle School, up in Midland, up in Midland Central Road. That's the boardwalk there, there's some areas that need to be upgraded as well, so we're looking to rip that out. And then the last page is the budget. So I met with a contractor to get an estimate, and the estimate came back at $279,500. We'll still need to do a passing on the fossil bed area, it wasn't included the last one we did, so unfortunately, that's another $7,000, and then some minor signage, about $500. So the total project would be $287,000. So I am looking to apply for the grant application of 50%, which is $143,500, and then the matching commitment from the township would be $143,500 as well.
Janet, thank you very much. It was, a lot of stuff is needed out there. It's been, a lot of people have been spending a lot of time out there in the last year, I would say, but it's definitely needs to get done, so thank you. Any questions from the committee? Public, how many questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Don Watson.
Don Watson. Go ahead, Don, how you doing tonight? Okay. Any comments, move along, Heidi.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have a public hearing of proposed ordinance 2021-3311, ordinance establishing section 137-24 at SEC, entitled permitting the managed care of free-roaming cats to the code of the township of Middletown.
Would anyone like to speak on ordinance 2021-3311? Start with, anyone inside here? Come on up, please, need your name and address. You just gotta come up to the microphone, please, so it's, everyone can hear you at home.
Kimberly Cara Pielo. Full address?
Please.
39 ICL Avenue in West Temple Town.
Great, thank you.
So I was very pleased to see that there was finally something in order for feral cat populations. I would like to congratulate the township for recognizing the problem. And I'm here to not criticize the ordinance whatsoever, but actually to offer assistance when it comes to helping the ordinance or developing more perfected ordinance. I understand one of the things you would like to do is a case study in two years. And the way it's written right now, one of my fears would be that it maybe wouldn't provide for an accurate case study the way it's written. And not to take up too much of the township's time, I'm happy to leave some information. I do have some bullet points that I typed up in regards to some of the qualifications for a feral cat, you know, caregiver, caretaker. That, I think if they read it as it's written right now, it would, in a sense, deter them from becoming part of the study or a licensed caregiver. Some of it would have to be due to the fact of financial responsibility, paying the license would be, and it's minimum, you know, at least in my opinion, but to some people, the proposed $50, you know, pays for a microchip or a whole month of food for a colony. So there's, really one of the best ways to perfect this would be to work with people who perhaps do it every day or have the responsibility of colonies. Only then do you really know. If somebody does not do it and writes an ordinance, they really don't know the problems that may exist with what's developed. Would you like me to mention a few items, or?
At the floor, you can, great. I know we spoke with Rich in the back at length and Tony about six months ago on this, and we've been continuing conversations, so it's been a long process. It's something that's needed very much, so we're all on the same page with that.
And I think the old mentality, of course, you know, for everywhere, all across the country, is just ignore it, the problem will go away, or.
It's not gonna go away, it needs to be addressed.
Just euthanize, let's get rid of euthanized, but as you mentioned in the article, was the vacuum effect and recognizing, and it's true. I, my qualifications, originally, I was from Bergen County. I worked with a 501(c) nonprofit. I was the Trapper Return Program developer in certain communities. I worked with Fort Lee and Westwood to develop these programs to help neighbors who generally do want to help the situation, and the adoption program director for this organization. And I've done this for many years, and I can vouch for the fact that the vacuum effect is real, and TNR does work. And really, after 10 to 15 years, a colony, if no new cats develop, does disappear, you know, over time, you know, they die off or whatever. No new kittens, you know, so it's actually, it's a fabulous program. Some of the concerns, and again, I'm very happy to leave this with you, would be the expense of microchipping every cat. It's expensive, you know, there's no programs to really help caretakers. There's little plus services, but there might be a colony of 10 cats, and now add $50 per cat for each microchip that adds up. But I do like the idea of microchips because it helps to maintain the colony, especially if some of them are missing, they can be returned. The, you know, one of the other things was a $500,000 liability insurance that the caretaker or sponsor would have to take out to cover, yeah, liability. I understand the township has to be concerned, but for somebody who maybe is on a budget, and most caretakers are on a budget, this would be a huge concern to them as far as cost is concerned. Does the, basically, the types of resources or suggestions the township would have to help assist the caretakers, or if people do fall out, say, listen, I want to be a part of this program, but I can't afford it. And, you know, what kind of resources will the township offer? Because most people will just hang up the phone and say, you know what, this is too much for me, I can't be bothered, I'll just continue to, and allow them to reproduce. If a, if a cat, actually, one of the ordinance states that, the paragraphs of the ordinance states that the cats have to be re-vaccinated every time there's a vaccination expiration. Anybody who takes care of colony knows it's very difficult to retract the cats every one to three years, whenever it expires. So somebody might say, I'll try my best, but what if I can't re-vaccinate because the cat refuses to be trapped? What are the consequences to the caretaker? Is there a fine? You know, so these are some things that, some questions that a lot of caretakers had, that they might say, if I'm not signing up for this, this is actually too much work than it's worth to me, I'm gonna go, you know, behind the scenes and just do what I've been doing all these years. So therefore, when the township does a study in two or three years, they might feel, you know, well, this case, really, this study did not really provide information. This really did not reduce the population like we thought because we don't have enough caretakers, or we don't have enough data. So let's go back to the old way of just trapping and removing, euthanizing. So that was, that's just basically my fear reading it as, is that it won't provide for an accurate study.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. And if you got some time after, Rich can tell you, it's a long plan we've been working on, so he can kind of go over some of the stuff with you.
Okay, wonderful. I also brought along some breeding material, and Alley Cat Allies is a great organization for information to provide for such questions and concerns.
Okay.
Cute name for everything.
There is a cute name for everything, yes. Thank you for your time.
No problem, thank you, thank you for your comments. Are you gonna be staying? Because we want to just grab some of the information when you leave. Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public here tonight? Heidi, any, I can't see if there's any hats. Okay. Don, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. I was trying to speak earlier, but I guess you couldn't hear me. Anyway, what that lady just presented, seems like you guys should table this ordinance and go back and rework it and make it more resident-friendly to encourage people to participate in this program. It doesn't seem like, from what she said, like anybody wants, is going to want to participate if they have to put out all these fees and do all this other extra work, more than what they're doing. So I would like to see this tabled and vote on it when the rest of the committee is present also. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, for your comments.
No problem.
Heidi, any more comments? Okay, come on forward, please, name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Michelle Collins, 120th Drive, Jumping Brook. So I was, I didn't know that this was prepared for today, but I don't know the specifics of the plan, but I've never considered partnering with Monmouth County SPCA.
Yes.
And having done to the TNR?
We are on Twitter.
Oh, so like, all you have to do then is just call them, and they come, or you drop off the cats there, and then they pay for it all, and, you know. Can you do with that one?
We're already partners with Monmouth.
You are? Because when I trapped cats in my neighborhood, I had to pay for it myself, and it wasn't covered.
Yeah, as of our last meeting.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay, so then this program is?
It's gonna work along with their program? It's, and Rich, I'm sorry, I'm not versed, but I believe they're gonna chip all the cats as well, correct?
Yeah, but not, we're gonna provide.
Oh, okay. I'm too blustering for them, so I was like, this is exciting.
This was, this is, it's exciting. What we did here, this was a lot of work, Rich and Tony did a lot of work on it, worked with the county, so we're looking to push this forward here. But thank you for your comments.
That's great, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Good organization.
Yeah, sure.
Just as it relates to the ordinance, getting this passed in the current state is our way of getting this into the system. We can, we can really sharpen, sharpen this as we move forward with the comments from both of our residents to make it better, but right now, we don't have anything. So this, this is a great first step in getting us in a position to be able to help and, you know, make this situation a little better. So Mr. Watson had a comment about tabling it. I think if we table it, we put off the ability to help.
Any other comments here?
Got one more.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you have to come back, coffee. Oh, we don't, wait, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to come at the end of the meeting. I'm sorry, but. Okay, no more public comment, I move to close public hearing and adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Mammon Clark.
Yes.
Many women's now.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybelle.
Yes.
Pushing carriers to pass this ordinance on second. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have an introduction of proposed ordinances. We have ordinance 2021-3312, an ordinance amending chapter 540 of the Code of the Township of Middletown privating the operation of any class of cannabis business within the jurisdiction of the township of Middletown.
I move to approve ordinance 2021-3312.
Second.
Mammon Clark.
Yes.
Many women's now.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybelle.
Yes.
Pushing carriers to pass this ordinance from first reading with a public hearing to be held July 19th, 2021. At this time, we have a consent agenda, which would include reservations 21-166, 21-177, including bingo, and applications.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Mammon Clark.
Yes.
Many women's now.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybelle.
Yes.
Pushing carriers to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have the Township Committee acting as the ADC issuing authority. We have resolution 21-178, a resolution authorizing renewal of liquor licenses for the 2021 to 2022 license period.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Mammon Clark.
Yes.
Many women's now.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybelle.
Yes.
Pushing carriers to adopt resolution 21-178. At this time, we have township committee comments.
Ryan, we'll start with you.
First, I'd like to thank Janet and her team for a job well done, doing the research to try to make Porcy Park a little better. I grew up on the other side of Porcy Pond, and spent most of my childhood playing down there, making our way all the way around through the mud to the other side. So, thank you. I actually even built my Eagle Scout project a long time ago, 26 years ago. I want to congratulate Jack Fowler for my fire company, and he's a member of Link Town Fire Company. We were able to honor him two Sundays ago, 50-plus years of service in the fire department. The gentleman still answers calls to this day. It's, if you know his family, you know that they're all involved in one way or another. But Jackie, in particular, just embodies what you want a volunteer to be. He'd do anything for you at any time, and he shows up morning, noon, night. So Jack, congratulations on your 50 years. And then, on a somber note, our fire department lost an important person over the weekend, one of my personal best friends, and just an all-around good guy. He's the next captain out of station, three years to go for redemption. Adam Farrar, died of brain cancer on Saturday. He fought for a couple of years really hard, and this was, this was a tough one, so I just wanted his family to know that we're all behind him for that. That's it.
Thank you. Many women's now.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, they are in the seat.
Yes, thank you.
Couple things today. I attended the Elks Flag Day Ceremony, and I go every year to this with the mayor, and it's really truly amazing. They talk about the history of the flag, and to hear what the flag has been through is pretty incredible. It reminds us all of those who fought and gave their life for that flag in this country. And I just hope we get back to everyone respecting the flag for what it stands for. It really brought it home for me, so. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the 9/11 anniversary ceremony we're gonna have at the Memorial Gardens. We have free fundraising opportunities for people, as most of you know, but we are coming to a time when we're gonna finish up. So the banners that we are offering will be available until mid-July. So if you order by then, the orders will get in on time. The bricks for the walkway, we will continue offering until the end of this month, and then it needs to go, to get stamped. So the third one is my favorite. Our lawn signs, you should all know, went viral. We are shipping these now all over the country. I think the last one went to Florida, but we are making them available to all the towns. And we purposely left Middletown off. So if anyone would like to celebrate with us on a very solemn anniversary, they can put this in their front yard, whether they're in Hometown, Manalapins, or wherever, or in Florida, we're finding out. So we're doing very well here, we're offering them, we're at the train station, we're basically there Friday, Saturday, and Sunday between 12 and 3. We're probably gonna scale back to Saturday and Sunday, 12 to 3, because it's getting to be a very long weekend. But you can also, if you have ordered, you can go see Maggie at the Middletown Arts Center. She has them stored in there, and she's more than happy to give them out. And if anyone hasn't ordered online and would like to go and purchase one, you can do that as well. So we're hoping that we're gonna have these all over Middletown, and get ready for the anniversary come September 11th. So that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, I can't, I keep on calling you.
It's the seat, it's the.
I know, it's the seat.
All right, I just want to thank, congratulations again to Sergeant Walsifer. Great job, I know you worked hard here, chief couldn't say, say anything bad about you. Everything was, you've been doing a fabulous job. So congratulations to echo Ryan's comments, Jack Fowler, just an amazing guy. He knows everything about fire trucks, probably has saved, I was trying to get a dollar figure on, for the township, he's probably saved us every bit of a half a million dollars on maintenance over the years. Cost the fire company a lot of money in Greece, but, but he's definitely saved us a lot of money, so great job. This, this month, we also celebrated three Eagle Scouts. I want to give them a shout out, Timothy McGinnis, Jason DeSantis, and George Simma. Great job, they both, all three of them were, did some amazing projects, so I want to give them a shout out. I also want to give a shout out to Junction Boutique, who opened up on 36, next to McDonald's. There's 40 local artists that sell their stuff there. 40 local artists that sell their stuff there. It's really a neat thing, just to have basically 40 different businesses in one location. I encourage everyone to go visit that location. Fabulous job. Chris Slater's our named owner and operator. Also, Janet, I know, fabulous job with the park over there, and I was, I'm excited to say and watch the video of Bobman Park being done. One of the parks, we're moving along pretty quickly, I feel. So, excited to see that park all redone, and the footage is, I think it's on our website as well, right? Okay. It's, just go visit the park. It's beautiful. So, thank you, Janet. I just also have, just, the mayor put a proclamation together for Pride Month and for June, and he had sent it out to a few different people that have requested it, so that's in my comments here. So, that's all I have.
At this time, we have a couple comments?
We'll start with everyone in the crowd here. So, we have just, you have five minutes. Got to come up to the microphone here, state your name. You do have a five-minute time limit, so come on up if you have some comments. If not, we'll go to the computer here after. Come on up.
Good evening. My name's Jim Moran. Lifelong Middletown resident. I live at 26 Hiller, a retired bellman, and I don't know how this happened, but I've been ordained the pickleball ambassador to Middletown.
You do have to tell, so who's better, Pat or I?
I can't lie. I have two requests. One's pretty simple, and one's a little bit more complicated. A couple of years ago, with the help of you guys and Janet at the rep department, we were able to get pickleball lines at Normandy and Tyndale, and at that time, we put strong boxes in the corner of both places where we keep our nets, because we only have the lines if we supply the nets. Unfortunately, at Tyndale last week, our box was vandalized for the third time. Somebody comes and they crazy-flued the locks and the combination. It's unfortunate, it's a pain, but, you know, we have to come and drill through the locks and replace them. So, my first request is pretty simple. I just didn't want to do this without township approval on township property. Wouldn't just like to put our own security camera up right above the box. I didn't know who to go to. I assumed this is the place. I didn't want to put a security camera up on township property without permission.
Tony, I'm not sure if that could be...
I don't know. I think that's something we have to talk with the township attorney's office about, or insurance carriers about, but we can get back to that.
Okay. All right, the second thing, and I'll be real quick. I understand that Tyndale is going to be resurfaced, it's going to be redone, and I'm here to request, if possible, if we could possibly get some permanent pickleball courts there. And let me make, let me make my spiel real quick. Just ask yourself a rhetorical question. If Tyndale was a blank lock, would anybody come and suggest we put 16 pickleball courts up in one spot right now? We have, I mean, tennis courts. We have tennis courts all throughout Middletown. What I'm looking to do, and what I, what I request, is that one-fourth of Tyndale be dedicated for permanent pickleball courts. We leave 12 tennis courts. Right now, you have 16 units you can reserve. If you reserve 12 tennis courts and make eight pickleball courts, you would then have 20 units to reserve. You may ask about the cost. I think it would almost be a push, because right now, you would be, and I'm just talking about that 25% of Tyndale where there's four tennis courts. When it's redone, you're still going to have four tennis courts there and be lined for at least six pickleball courts, if not eight. If you took out the four tennis courts and put in eight pickleball courts, you would, you'd put in eight nets for pickleball, but you'd be saving, you wouldn't be putting up the four tennis nets, nor would you be lining the tennis net, tennis lines. So, you'd have the same amount of lines and only four additional nets. Right now, we have apps on our phone for playing at Tyndale and Normandy. We have 245 members at Tyndale and 100 aside members at Normandy. I don't think, I know I made this pitch a couple of years ago, and it's only gotten worse. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America. It's just that simple. It's estimated that within five years, it'd be more popular than tennis. Every town in the area is basically looking at putting up permanent pickleball nets. They have them at Long Branch, they have them in Eaton Town, and every town is addressing this issue. I'm here to make the plea to the pickleball community. I think it's time Middletown take a, take a good look.
Ms. Ryan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody was coming up from the back? Yes.
I'm Rocky Rios. I live over on 41 Harmony Ave. First, I'd like to thank whoever on the Township Committee made it possible to actually issue their proclamation and its approval type. But at the same time, I have to ask, what took so long? And what kind of example are we setting for, you know, our neighboring towns, who already held events and had signs of, what kind of example are we setting for our friends and neighbors in the LGBT community?
Just to answer your question, this was issued by the mayor? That's your first question, and that's, he issued it, and when he issued it, I don't know.
Each proclamation was issued at, at the request, so each request that came to the mayor's office, he issued the proclamation to address each one.
But there's no, so there's no town law or permission of Pride Month. It's just, if you ask him if he supports it, he says yes.
I can't speak. I'll be here.
He's not here, but he'll be here next week, and you can speak why he sent it out that way.
Pride Month is almost over, so you can be sure I'll call.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public here? Speak.
Midrout, Russell, 32 Middletown Avenue. So, the proclamation that the mayor put together, distributed to those who requested to hear it, do you have a copy of it?
I do.
I respectfully ask that you read it to us right now, so we can...
I'm sorry. I can't hear a word you're saying, so.
Respectfully request that you read the proclamation right now, so we can hear it.
Okay. I'm going to be...
Do you want me to read it for you? Can you say?
It's the readers' time. What's that? I didn't hear it.
From the office of the mayor, Pride Month, June 2021. Whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, and that is what Middletown strives to provide, some of those most, some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that advocate on behalf of marginalized communities. And whereas in the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer identifying LGBTQ plus people, a historic turning point occurred in New York City on June 28, 1969, with the onset, the onset of the Stony Wall riots. Those, during these riots, LGBTQ plus citizens rose up and protested against discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas all people deserve to live with dignity and respect, free from fear and violence, and protected against discrimination, Middletown celebrates the proud legacy LGBTQ plus individuals who have woven into the fabric, fabric of our nation. We continue to work to build an inclusive and stigma-free society where every citizen knows that this township supports them. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Tony Perry, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as Pride Month in the Township of Middletown.
Thank you. Any other comments from... Go over to your computer here, Eddie.
We have Heather McEwen.
Hi, everyone. My name is Heather McEwen. I'm a Red Bank resident, but I am a board member at Monmouth Conservation Foundation. Can you hear me?
I could. Heather, what was, what was your address? I'm sorry.
I'm at 198 East Bergen in Red Bank.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. And so, yeah, I'm a board member and trustee at Monmouth Conservation Foundation, and, you know, I wanted to attend this meeting to learn more about the Porcy Park project, and, you know, based on the photos, it looks like it could certainly use repair to ensure the safety of visitors of all ages. And so, what I wanted to just ask was that if you thought it might be helpful if in your grant application, MCF wrote a letter of support in request for the grant for this project.
Yes, that would be great if you can do that, please. Thank you.
Okay, can you please advise what that lovely woman who was up here before's name was?
It's Janet. Well...
Okay. I'll get her contact info after. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments.
My pleasure.
Hi, my name's Don Watson. I'm a lifelong resident of Middletown, living right now at 1 Collinson Drive in New Monmouth. Miss Ryan made a couple of comments before about the ordinance you guys adopted, that you can't table it and you need to get it on the books right away, because it will give a vehicle to help the residents. Mr. Merkantanti sitting over there, he's just said that there is a vehicle right now, as of the last meeting, with the Monmouth County SPCA, who agreed to trap and ship these feral cats. So, there is a vehicle to deal with the cats right now, and it wasn't expedient to adopt this ordinance right now, in my opinion. Also, the Porcy Park, there's a Porcy Park Conservancy. What are they responsible for? I thought they were responsible to maintain the park.
No, they're not.
No, they're not.
No.
Well, what, what is their organization?
They do some programming at the park for historic reenactments and things like that, but the actual physical maintenance of the park is a township responsibility, because it's a township park.
I see. And that's the headquarters for the Recreation Department now, right?
Right. And that's, that's nothing new, by the way. That's always been the case with the Porcy Park. The Conservancy never did any capital, you know, substantial maintenance to the, to the site. Township always did that.
Okay, I was just curious, because I recall something about a conservancy and wasn't sure what their responsibilities were. Thanks, Tony. Yeah, it does look like some of those boardwalks do need to be worked on, and I guess, when you make those boardwalks wider, isn't that going to affect the vegetation that's growing around it? Is that detrimental to the park itself?
Most things will be restored kind of as-is, so there won't be much expansion beyond what's already disturbed.
And Janet was showing one boardwalk that was overgrown, so you're going to have to cut that all back?
Yeah, that would have to be cut back even today, if we don't replace anything.
Right.
You know, nothing, not already disturbed.
That's like swamp grass or something, right?
Could be. Yeah, I don't typically, but it's, a lot of it is wildlife vegetation, but it'll just be trimmed back to make the boards accessible.
Right. I think that's about all I got for tonight. We'll see you guys next month.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
You bet. Oh, and one more thing. You are speaking for the mayor tonight, since you're sitting in his chair, and that's your responsibility. I think before you said you weren't speaking for the mayor, but...
In reference to something he wrote, he wrote the proclamation there. I didn't write it.
That's another thing. The proclamation, usually the proclamations are included with the packet, and this, even if you just read them in for the record, they're included in the packet. I was wondering why this one wasn't included with the packet tonight.
I can't answer that for him, but like I said, I wasn't speaking for him. He did it this way. I'm not sure why.
Yeah, that's a good question. We'll have to ask him next month if he shows up.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
That's not funny.
It's, nobody up here is laughing. It's the audience that's laughing.
We have Lauren Casal.
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Lauren Casal. I live on Chapel Hill, and my mailing address is Red Bank, but I'm part of the Middletown Township. So, I just wanted to make a comment about Pride Month. I am a woman. I am married to a man, but I do have children in this community, in the school system, and I just think it would be a really nice representation if we were to show the pride flag, because it does mean love, and love is love no matter who it is. And I just would like to know that my children grow up in a town that includes everybody, and that everybody should feel welcome and loved, and it would just be really nice, and I'd be really proud to be part of a town like that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. The month is almost over, so I hope we could get it done sooner than later. That would be great. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, this time, there's no more public comments. Move to close.